You know, we're gonna have to. Land Commission, we have to elect a president, vice president.
Well, then we already do that with Malloy.
I don't recall of it. I mentioned it to Jim. He didn't respond back at all about having. He was more or less gonna take over.
Right.
That that was under the assumption, but we'll still need somebody to. Step in there, PS up there.
So I think as far as the pool goes. What did Wannamango say they're gonna? Look at July first. So.
Yeah, I think they were looking what I was reading and kind of what I gathered out of it.
So my thought is. Still try to do it sometime June if we can.
Yeah.
Whether it's the week of the fifteenth or the twenty second. Now, we need about two weeks of lead time to get it open with water and stuff. Or the way and something like that, so. Um, it's almost like we can set it out two more weeks, three more weeks, whatever. And then if we can't open, we just have to meet again.
Well, I think by then we'll know for sure what's gonna happen.
Yeah, because if it goes one more.
Yeah, that's July.
Yeah. So.
Let's just see how it feels, how how it goes.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
I'm afraid he's gonna go and extend it again.
But yeah, I don't know what he's gonna do. I mean, I did see today there's a clarification. They're gonna allow rec use for pools like team. Um, or aquatic sports or something.
Okay.
So maybe they're starting to think they're gonna use that a little bit. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I would just. What was there a couple more deaths? Again, today.
Oh, in the area or in the county or?
State.
Oh, in the state. I want it to say there was deaths almost every day.
Minnesota hits new daily high with thirty five COVID nineteen deaths reported Thursday. Death toll rises to nine hundred and sixty seven.
Oh, thirty five people died in one day? Wow.
Well, that's just enough to keep this thing going. If, I don't know, everybody is. A new daily high. At least seven eighty seven of the nine sixty seven deaths are residents of long term care facilities. Yeah, you know, they shoved all of them in the. You know, right away from the beginning, somebody that was sick, put them in nursing facilities. No wonder it's got going like it did, so. Residents of long term care facilities now account for approximately twelve percent of Minnesota's positive cases. But about eighty one percent, but about eighty one percent of the deaths.
Yeah.
There are currently six hundred and six people post hospitalized with two forty two of them in the ICU. A new high. Nearly thirteen percent of Minnesota's COVID nineteen cases have required hospitalization. You know, if they really think about it. How many don't we have in ICU? How many of them so far this have died of the flu? We haven't heard a thing about the flu. We have more than that in a year's time. You know, we're winter time.
Yeah, I thought I read though that there was thirty thousand food deaths a year. There's been a hundred thousand COVID deaths, so I don't know. I don't know. Gotta quantify those numbers for the food, I'll be honest with you. Yeah, I know. It's frustrating. It is.
I haven't changed it at all.
Okay.
Over the last, I did not charge enough, but it's got a pretty long charge on it.
All right. Well, we just basically. I will see now. I don't know this planning commission meeting. Everybody may come in except Dan is my guess. Um, cause Jerry emailed me or he mailed everybody, but and then. Sounds like he talked to Dennis Wickham, so assuming those two are gonna come in. And then Malloy, I think is gonna come in, so the only one is Dan. I don't think, I think he's gonna call in. I believe.
Thank you.
Milty, hey, did you get the COVID nineteen plan for?
I got it.
Eight pages worth?
Yeah.
So I know if you want a copy, I printed some out.
I, I can grab one for you. I don't have a list.
Good.
I've got the email, wasn't it?
I just took the state. Stuff, so we probably should adopt that. For the muni. The, uh, it's just a revised administrative policy that I added. Stuff for the municipal. These are two emails from. The city attorney and the other one is from. State Association for Municipals. John and Dan, can you hear me?
For bars and restaurants, they say the workers are required to customers are encouraged.
Yeah, that's what it amounts to.
So the customers aren't required to wear face covering for bars.
I'm just reading off. If you got same one, this came from.
It says in the, if you look at that.
I haven't got this.
Okay. So I'll tell you what, I'll email it to you.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Perfect.
Loud and clear, man. Got her jacked up here. Volume wise. All right, I gotta go. Send Tom the link.
Hey, seen you go hot rodding down through that barricade yesterday.
My God, where are you all the time?
You never, you just look straight ahead.
Yep. Where are you? Where are you?
I was sitting there waiting. I could see the flames are coming down the road ninety miles an hour. And I figured gloves not gonna turn. She didn't.
I don't know how you catch me everywhere I go.
I know.
Feeling you're stalking me.
I know. I feel that way, don't I?
No, I put on the sixty. Little apparently. Mark, I want to say they were standing outside the shop right after raining with people, motorcycle. Some guy with a trailer with a moron, like, oh my God, he just buried it in here. I'll move, I'll use the ditch and off. Yeah, it's crazy the people that drive through it. Everyone who's busy driving through that, which is that there. I didn't even clean it until Sunday when you drove up there. You know, they're just, it's quite a waste on it.
Hey, John. Got your audio figured out?
I, oh, I had it turned off.
All right. Hello, everyone. There we go.
Hi, Tom.
Hi there. It's Ivan.
All right, can you guys hear okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, somewhere better than here.
Sorry about that, Mark. My invite got somehow.
Right, well, give that water temperature and use those speedometers.
Speedometer and GPS.
Which is nice, but you do have a speedometer.
Yeah, so far. It was really easy to load last time on that bunk trailer.
So is it on a triple twenty? Is there three bumps?
Where that's coming from.
Two bumps on the outside, one's too far down the area. So it's really easy as long as it was two.
You just gotta hit it.
But if you just, we just hauled it in on the rope. I didn't.
Who are we listening to there?
No idea.
Maybe it was Sharon. Come here. Come, come. I'm here. Yeah, say hi. You gotta say hi to everybody. Yes.
Ivan, the terrible Ivan.
Ivan, who's this? Right here. Yes, no, no working.
There we go. All right, now we got her.
Little girl walking her dog.
All right, I got some treats for you. Okay, no growling. Come on.
Ivan, yeah.
There was a little girl walking her dog ready, right out the street. You saw that?
Yeah.
Anyway. The treasures of Zoom meetings, right? Yay.
Yep. Hopefully we won't have these. I don't know too much into doing, but I guess we'll see.
Mark, I don't see you at all. Are you on? Oh, I see.
I just have it pointed so you can see the the official up here.
Oh.
So you can see him. There's my hand.
Everybody ready to go?
Yes.
Uh, Richard does not.
I don't know. I told Richard to call in. So next, I call him this afternoon.
Excuse me.
Oh, yeah, he's right ticket.
Okay. Having a special meeting on Tuesday, May the twenty eighth, twenty twenty five PM at Kenyon City Hall. And what we'll do is we'll go this way. So Holly, you can mark in. Those present in the chambers itself is Henke, Mark, Milty, Wayne and Holly. Ones that are by. Video or Zoom is Tom, Dan, Richard is questionable at the time, and Scott Rakes.
And John.
Well, I'm sorry, John, I'm sorry about that. I had you at the top. Sorry about that, John. Hey, I believe outside of that, everybody is present as far as I know. And that's for a call to order. Number two is discuss expanded outdoor alcohol sales with Matt Bartel, manager of the Kenyon Muni. And Matt, if you would like to step up or whatever you got, that would be fine.
Whatever works best for you guys, I can come up there.
Yeah, I would say probably come up here so that they can hear too.
So there's two parts to this. Matt's gonna talk about his plans here. There's gonna be two things that we'll need to have approval for. One of them, I emailed you this afternoon. The first item will be just overall to approve his plan to expand outdoor alcohol sale. Once he's done with that, that'll be the first question for the council. The second one will be to adopt revised administrative policy thirty one, which now includes. Basically recommendations or a plan for the COVID end of it as far as reopening the muni. And this is a requirement of the state. So those will be the two items. So Matt, if you wanna go ahead and just talk.
You have a microphone. I don't wanna creep in too close to you guys, but.
Can you guys hear him?
That's just fine.
It should be. I'll hear you there.
Okay. So as most of you know, the governor has released bars and restaurants to open, but with outdoor seating only. Uh, a maximum capacity of fifty people, if you have the space for it. All tables must be six feet apart, four people per table or six people if they are in the same household. So to go forward with this, we are looking at fencing in the entire grass area out there. Rather than just our patio, or we could only probably have eight people on there and it wouldn't be worth it. So we're looking at fencing in the whole grass area, putting tables out and serving outside. We will serve with all plastic, so everything is single use and thrown away and cans out there. So there is no glass outside. We will set up a bar station outsides that you have view of the inside door. And Monday through Wednesday, I believe the outside bartender will also have a view of the inside and tend to both places as it's less busy those days. Thursday, Friday and Saturday, our plan is to have one person inside manning the off sale and then can also cook food and take care of stacking while we have one person outside tending to the people outside. Um, our plan, as certain things are laid out right now, I'm sure will change as things go. Like I say, I'm going off of what a lot of other municipals and bars are doing. And I'm sure as we get into it, we'll realize things we need to tweak a little bit, but. For now, that is my starting plan.
Milty, what about restroom facilities?
We can, we can allow people to go in and use the restrooms one person at a time.
Okay.
As long as they are in and out, so you can't have your group of four girls go to the bathroom together. Or or four guys, to not stereotype, but limited to, uh, the staff will only allow one person at a time to enter the building and use the restroom.
How did they access the fenced in area? Did they come in the front door or is there gonna be?
Front door of the building and then out to the patio door.
Okay, and um, as far as going in and out of the fenced area, they that won't be allowable, right?
They'll have to go through the building to get in and out of the fenced area.
Okay.
I think that's the safest to just regulate people. I don't know with all the social distancing, if that's quite what they have in mind for the ideal situation. But I think for us to monitor who comes and goes, that's the only way to do it is they have to in entry through the building.
How many people are you anticipating at a maximum?
Well, fifty is the maximum capacity. I believe with the grass area fenced off, we can provide seating for fifty people. I mean, obviously, if there's less than four at a table, we would be less than fifty. Reservations are required under this governor's ordinance, but I am a member of a municipal managers group. And they have assured that reservations can be made thirty seconds in advance. I, I think the main thing is, is for tracking so that if. And Eric is up at the muni one night and the next day he has COVID nineteen. Well, they can look back at our logbook and see, okay, who did, who was Wayne exposed to at the muni? And so that's where we will have now, as people call for reservations. I'm sure a lot of people are using nicknames and so on, and. You know, we're obviously not checking IDs for reservations, so we will make the best of what we can with this, but. I mean, nothing in this situation is going to be perfect.
Are you able? Are you able to open on the first?
We, with council's approval tonight, I'm gonna get the ball rolling tomorrow and we will be open on the first if that works.
All right.
Okay, with all the changes that the governor is coming out with and such as far as loosening restrictions and stuff. Do we have any idea how long this temporary? Arrangement will be, will last. Do we think it's gonna end in June? Do we, it's gonna go to October? What?
Now, of my original thinking going into this is it's probably not gonna end in June because they're not gonna want the bars open right before the Fourth of July and have everyone flooding all the bars on the fourth. So I was anticipating originally it going to at least August and possibly beyond. But now in doing some searching and doing some checking, I know a lot of your state representatives are also antsy about all these situations. And the governor's emergency order, I believe, is set to expire June twelfth. And I think as of June twelfth, a lot of your state representatives are going to push for more of a. Bringing stuff to the floor rather than the governor being a one man show controlling everything. And if that happens, stuff could change rapidly, but I'm planning on this probably going to at least August.
Okay, I guess the reason I ask is financially, is it worth it to do this? If it was only gonna be two weeks, I'd say, you know, it's really worth it, but uh, yeah, eight weeks is a whole other story.
I think, I think uh, the business will be there and I think, you know, in the off sale, I'm basically selling beers for a dollar a piece when they buy it in a twelve pack or twenty four pack. Whereas with the bar open, I'll be selling some beers for four dollars a piece and hopefully uh, get our numbers straightened out that have gotten spun upside down the last two months.
Okay.
Matt, are, um, are you the one that, or whoever is working is the person that is gonna be in charge of the social distancing? If, if they.
Whoever's working will have the table spaced six feet apart, will have everyone confined to their tables, and we will do the best we can. Now, in some circumstances, if there's a group down there and there's someone that hasn't seen them for three or four months. I don't know how we're gonna stop them from having a conversation with them, you know, I'm assuming some.
What?
Uh-oh. They'll come back, I think.
Scott, are we under any liability with this if somebody picks up COVID?
Um, generally, no. I, I didn't know if Matt was still speaking there or what, but um, generally, no. We would not be, very difficult to impose that on any entity that's doing this, but that's the whole idea by adopting the preparedness plan. If we're following that as well as our, um, the muni is following that, we should not have an issue.
Okay.
I, I think the difficulty would be how, how could you prove that?
Yeah, how could you prove they picked it up?
You know, if I go, how do I prove which kid gave me the cold, you know?
It's great. No, that's very true.
You know, the other thing I'm wondering about.
You know, who have they seen in the last fourteen days? And in the small community, all of these people are exposed to each other at the grocery store, at the gas station, every, every other place around town. And as they come through the off sale as we currently are right now.
Yeah.
I think the power that you and your employees have, Milty, is if people aren't obeying the rules, you just say, here's your one warning. And if you can't handle it, you can't come back. And I mean, there aren't many places to go, so I can't. Anyone's gonna threaten to take their business somewhere else, cause uh, so I think that's the power you have in being able to enforce social distance.
Yep, and also the employees have all been kinda told to monitor. If someone is looking like they're coughing or hacking or just doesn't look right, tell that person, you know, maybe you shouldn't be here tonight and ask them to leave or tell them to leave because uh, I think that's the most important thing. Is if someone looks like they're showing symptoms, to get that person out before anyone else is exposed to them. Now, I know there are asymptomatic people around and I don't know how to deal with that, but like I say, we'll do our best to keep people apart. I'm sure people are gonna have conversations throughout the night and we do our best we can to just keep them all separate.
I have a question. Uh, you talked about one person in the bathroom at a time. How do you plan on regulating that? Is there gonna be a doorman? Is there gonna be a flag person saying, hey, I'm carrying this, I'm in the bathroom? What?
We will, we will have it posted and the bartender will kinda have to, have to regulate as best they can. Okay. It's, it's a deal where people need to use a little common sense on their own going into this also. And like I said, we're gonna have signs posted saying, these are the rules we have to follow. If we wanna remain open, do the best you can to help us follow these rules and, you know, we'll all be happier if, you know.
Yeah.
We can police what we can, but we can't, we can't police every act that every single person does. We're gonna do our best to control it and hopefully people use a little common sense along with it.
Okay. Anybody else have a question on this?
Um, early on in the year, didn't we give that spot to the taco truck and sign up? Give them a permit for it? Is there a problem?
They're, they're going, they're gonna move to another location.
Okay.
They haven't shown up yet, but they're gonna go in the parking lot between the. Police building and the KMU building there toward the, you know, toward highway fifty six there toward, you know, the first couple of. Parking stalls there, we've kinda set it up for them to go there, so.
Okay.
Might be actually be a better location for them.
Yeah, because they, they totally lost Red Wing Parking and everything for the summer.
Yeah. It's gonna bar parking too if they're there, so for the muni, so it's, yeah, it's better. So, so we think we found a better location for them. So you have a copy of the, we kinda drew in where the fence is gonna go. I don't know if there's any questions on that per se.
No.
Otherwise. Here, I guess the next thing would be to.
Yeah.
I just motioned.
Yeah. Again, I'll have.
Go ahead, John, go ahead. Whomever. No, this is Dan. I'll, I'll move approval of the request. Uh, by Matt Bartel to expand the outdoor spaces of the liquor store during. The, uh, starting June first, when we can open up to that.
I'll second.
John seconded. Okay. There's been a motion made in second. Um, to expand outdoor alcohol sales at the Kenyon Muni, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need a, we need a roll call, votes, I believe.
Roll call on that, okay. We will start then. Um, here, let's go back. John, we'll put you at the first of the list. What's your?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Okay, Richard, we don't know about, uh, Henke, yes, aye. So. Okay, Richard, we don't know about uh Henke, yes, aye. So ayes pass. Okay. Moving on then, we have uh Resolution twenty twenty authorizing the grant.
Oh, we have the, sorry, that revised administrative policy thirty-one.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, does everybody have a copy of this um City of Kenyon Administrative Policy Thirty-One?
Yes. Emailed out today.
Okay. But we will do adopt that guideline. And is there any question?
Yeah, this is the COVID response preparedness plan that was adopted back in um April or May council meeting. And what this does is the it adds a section or an appendix, addendum for the muni. And what I did with this addendum was I took the State of Minnesota Guidelines for employer preparedness requirements checklist. And what I did in this is I show um appendix B, it says additional COVID nineteen preparedness plan steps for Cam, Kenyon Municipal Liquor Store and Bar. And it says the city hereby adopts the State of Minnesota Industry Guide Guidance for Bars and Restaurants where applicable. So I think it kinda covers us cuz every single thing in here won't apply to us. And it it is a guidance, it's not an absolute requirement anyway, so uh I think that this is the best way to go because that way we don't have to go through the ten pages of stuff here and try to pick out what applies or not, so.
No, I was looking, I was looking at it. It's uh, there's a lot of good advice in there. Um, the other thing I was wondering, besides the Kenyon Muni, this would apply to the other two or three establishments, correct? Like the Country Club, the VFW and the Bar and Grill?
Yeah, they're supposed to adopt their own, you know, or have their own plan in place in fact, so you know, private business is just gonna say, I put the plan together. It's out, they're supposed to have it somewhere visible, posted, whatever, where we as a government entity have to, you know, physically adopt it, so. But yeah, it'll be the same thing, correct?
All right.
Uh, do we need a motion on that?
Yeah. Yep.
So that's just an insert in, okay. We're gonna need a a motion then, which I'll make the City of Kenyon Administrators Administrative Policy Thirty-One for COVID nineteen Preparedness Plan.
So that'll be revised.
Yeah.
Administrative Policy Thirty-One.
With addendum B?
Yeah, it'll write.
Yep, appendix B, sorry. I'll second that if we're ready for that.
Yeah, we are. You got it, Holly? Okay. There's been a motion made and second for revised City of Kenyon Administration Policy Thirty-One for the COVID nineteen Preparedness Plan. Is that gotta be single?
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, this has to be uh, each one has to uh make their own motion or uh saying on it. So we'll again start with uh John.
Aye.
Aye. Tom?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Richard is best, Henke, aye, so ayes will pass. Okay, moving on. This one here now, the resolution.
Yeah, this is why Scott to kinda break out of his South Pacific vacation there and try to give you a bit of a up or a little bit of a summary on this resolution cuz it is kind of unusual.
Okay. Riggs, are you by the ocean by chance?
No, I'm actually not. This is uh, that's just a picture from a trip that my wife and I took a year ago driving down in California and I just, you know, kinda dreaming of that and rather than sitting in my house all day, that kinda thing, but.
I I recognize the the trees and that, so that's why I was wondering.
Yeah.
Were you out there somewhere? We'll move on then.
Uh, I'll jump in on the resolution. I, this was drafted and I have used it of a number of other cities. Um the idea is to allow the most flexibility for staff to allow the opening of any type of restaurant that would do the outdoor seating at this point in time without having to bring back uh zoning type approvals or licensing approvals to the city council. In effect, it really does also apply to the muni um in in any aspects of looking at that. It delegates the authority to Mark to make sure, one, the license is appropriate and, two, uh that any zoning restrictions while they're temporarily not followed, uh Mark would work on that, you know, see if there's anything that's else needed if we're going to go a number of months, but it allows any other entity that would 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 like to have an outdoor seating with the alcohol or just outdoor seating for restaurant purposes to do that without without having to bring that back to the city council. The only reason we're doing resolutions like this and in a whole host of cities have adopted this type of resolution is to allow them to get up and running by the first is is possible without having to go back through the the usual process of amending liquor licenses. Uh, because a liquor license is really defined only to the compact and contiguous area of that entity when they file for the license on the front end. If we go through the licensing process again, it would have to be approved by the city, then go onto the state, and it would take us weeks upon weeks to get that done. So this is to streamline all those regulatory issues. Let Mark handle those. Uh, he'll bring back a report to you if anybody does this, the VFW, uh anybody else in the city wants to do it. Um, it it really is a tool to allow us to get everybody up and running as fast as possible. That's the best way to explain it.
Well, like, let's get them open. Let's get them going.
I agree.
So Mark, would you kinda walk around, like, let's say, the VF and wanted to expand around their perimeter, would you kinda walk around and just make sure that be okay?
Yeah, I'll probably go um showlander, but yeah, we'd probably take a look and see how it looks. And this is really only gonna cover existing businesses. It's not like we don't, we don't add more liquor licenses or anything. It's just for the existing ones, and it's really only the VF and possibly the Country Club, I guess, but they do have some outdoor now capacity, so it's almost really, this is gonna be geared more at, I think, the VF than any other location right now.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand what was going on out at the Country Club because um they opened up, they they have patio seating, they have a huge patio. And after golfing, we could have a beer and then one Thursday, they were offering mixed drinks and the next Thursday, they said, no, we can't have mixed drinks, we can only offer beer. So does this resolve that?
It it does as of June first because
First, okay.
Uh, there there was a change in the order and that's why they stopped with the mixed drinks. Actually, they were supposed to stop with beer as well, but a lot of golf courses were still doing that. That has been corrected in the most recent governor's order to allow service at the golf course. There's still some questions about what really is going on there and that's supposed to be clarified by Monday the first. But, yes, it looks like it's going to be corrected.
You know, I'm kinda curious why the Kenyon Bar Grill isn't looking to open. They have that outside per se patio. Is that not considered outdoor seating?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, I I think uh I stopped in there and they were planning on opening the first.
Oh, okay.
Well, at least that's what they told me.
Yeah, that's what we've heard too.
Okay, great, good.
Any more questions? Otherwise, we'll move on. Okay, we have um have to uh make a motion on this Resolution Twenty Twenty authorizing.
Oh, I will move Resolution Twenty Twenty dash fourteen.
I will second.
Okay, motion been made and second for Resolution Twenty Twenty dash fourteen authorizing the granting of regulatory flexibility of businesses in the City of Kenyon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need a roll call again.
Yeah, okay, gotta do roll call again on all these. Okay, this one. Again, we'll go with John.
Aye.
Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Henke, aye. So ayes pass. Okay, next one on the list. Is the update on Twenty Twenty Kenyon Pool Opening and Season? So either Mark or is it Wayne? Which one of you two are gonna step up?
I was gonna see here, just give me a second here. Um mute, okay. Um, Cheryl Doll is on too. I don't know if you put her in the minutes, but okay. Um, so basically this is somewhere between, you know, taking action on a delayed opening date or taking no action right now and just staying a holding pattern. But basically, as most of you or all of you are aware, we can't open the pool as of that June one um order the war in phase two pools um mysteriously last Thursday, I believe it was. Uh, directive showed up on the state's safe opening plan for pools at the bottom. So now at least we know we can't open as of June first. Um, my thought or recommendation on this is just to kinda stay in a holding pattern right now. Possibly, we could set a a date, like a delayed date of via June fifteenth or the third week of June as an opening date. Wanna Mingle is gonna open their tentative opening date now is pushed back to July first. Um, like to maybe see us try to be a little bit sooner than that if we can. And then if the order doesn't get lifted within a two-week window before we're supposed to open, we're gonna have to, you know, not open cuz Wayne, you need about what, two weeks?
It's two weeks to fill it heated and treated.
Yeah, so we need two weeks to fill the pool, get the water heated, get it chemically treated. So at this point, that means now, you know, by June first, we have to know if we're gonna fifteen, um we have to know by June first, so right now, so maybe it does look a little more toward like we wanna try to push it back more toward the first of July or the last would be June or I I don't know.
Well, to me, it looks like these phases are coming in two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know what, but they have been, yeah, they have been two weeks.
So I think he can have a speech before the fifteen announce the openings, but phase two will be so that would give us a little window to get stuff rolling.
Right.
So it may be the third
So the third week is the twenty-second? The fourth week is the twenty-ninth?
We could, depending on what the governor says, we could do the, probably the twenty-second at earliest.
And that would still give us till on or around the eighth of June or, cuz right now we're at right now, we're at the twenty so we have one for the, we have to come back again and, you know, make a decision or push it back further or something.
I just let it in the holding pattern for the time being, see how how it goes up to a certain point in time or
Okay.
The only part it's gonna be is is what's the restrictions gonna be?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and and so Scott, I don't think they really have to take action on this tonight per se. I mean, we've kinda conveyed to the public that the pool, we're still gonna open, that the pool's gonna open. But we don't have to, at this point now, as we get further into June, it's gonna become and closer to July, it's gonna become more difficult, I think, to look at opening. And this is probably, a lot of places have decided they don't wanna screw around with it and keep coming back, but I don't know, I think we have a pretty strong desire to kinda try to see if we can still open this year, so.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. There's no reason, you don't have to make a decision tonight. It's a matter and honestly, it's been changing uh on kind of a weekly basis. They haven't opened it up, but they've opened up some lessons with pools. There's an idea that it may open within the next couple of weeks in early June, so, yeah, I'd say nothing's needed right now.
Plus, when when the governor finally makes an announcement, it's not gonna be like, okay, you can open tomorrow. It's gonna be, you can open at this date in the future. So we would have, we would have some lead time in getting it ready.
Yeah, and we'll keep monitoring it and if we have to pull the council together or if we talk about it, they're a meeting in June, I mean, we'll to make a decision, we'll head forward, but right, we don't have to take any action on this tonight, that's for sure. So Cheryl, if you can hear me out there, um you're muted, but just call Wayne or I or send me an email if you have a question on anything, or we could talk about it tomorrow. I'll be in, Wayne will be in, so. Yeah. Okay. All right, so yeah, I don't know if there's any questions on that, otherwise I guess that might be.
I'd say just put it on the holding pattern and uh see once what happens when the council meeting comes up here in June. And uh we can wait a little bit more, but I do feel that by uh the first of July, we should uh have a pretty good indication as to what we're gonna do with it and what what, you know, the governor has to say, so.
Yeah.
If uh if that's it, we've um got the, everything else on the agenda is up, so we can uh adjourn as far as I am concerned. So anybody in favor of adjourned?
So move.
Okay, motion been made. Who's gonna second it? Okay, been made and second. Uh, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 So gotta do, gotta do roll call, I think. We still have to do a roll call.
Vote again, okay. Well, we'll start again. John?
Aye.
Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And Henke, so the ayes pass. We're outta here. All right. Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Yep, good Zoom meeting, this one. Well, gotta save for once. All right, thanks.
Hey, can we turn off the refrigerator?
Yes. I know, when that thing goes, wait.
Don't give up. Tenty. Here's another one, Holly, that's clear. Mark, if it's okay, I'm gonna shut this thing down for until we're ready to fire it up again.
Yeah, actually, when I try to just plug it in, I can find out.
Oh, okay. Let the concrete, let the blacktop down, you know, don't, you know, when you go flying by. You'll know where I am tonight. Yeah, if you, you park over here, it's a red one, you know, um, you wear the you gotta go out, you know where um yeah, you know where the fuel island is? Only we park over there. It says Jerry Barrett on it. It's a red cab over, Kenworth, or conventional, I should say. That's why I see ya. It's just the way it works out, going to Wim and Mingle. Or conventional, I should say. That's why I see ya. It's just the way it works out, going to win a medal.
It's okay.
Arm's trying to get a hold of me again.
Ooh, yeah.
So, put it in by here there, let that go for a little bit. Get some of this here. They're calling it K D H L. Why wouldn't we call K D H L? Because that's one near the motor man. Oh, yeah. There's something else to you guys, I don't know your spare time. What's that? Did I tell you that? See the one on the ground, we get that. It's set to a low down here, so you get that reed root too, so. I think we're thinking maybe over there with it, somewhere in that wall. Um, that's not as heavy, that's heavy. Yeah, it's probably thirty, forty pounds or something. Got a lot to figure out from this side, maybe twenty, maybe it's twenty pounds. It always seems to everyone, but, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not as heavy as it is.
A, Bigelow might need a little bit of a call. Or I'll say either Deuce and Mullen or Brentson Billy Goats or something, they have got all brass.
Okay, some of their lots up there. We sent a dozen letters out so far.
They only mow a couple times a year. Yeah, that was some agreement or what? Cause Troy Easter mows it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they don't keep that, like, they do residential?
And I mean, it just, that must be a sea of yellow up there, cuz all of it, you know, it's gone to seed now. Those people up there are trying to keep their yards decent.
I understand.
And they're nothing but dandelions.
Unfortunately, it's, you know, a lot of the town right now. Supposedly, we haven't gotten more complaints, we've.
See the city of Rochester took theirs off.
So they're not gonna enforce it?
They're not gonna enforce it this year.
But it's probably because of budget cuts, or anything else.
I just figured they wanted to, I always give them all that.
That's what I'm thinking, it's a lot of budget. Cuz a lot of their, their pool closing, they said was as much budget as it was anything else. You know, cuz their sales tax revenue is just gone. So. Yeah, unfortunately.
Do you think everybody's at home, they should be able to maintain it long?
Yeah, boy, you sure as heck can tell nowadays, there's a lot of people at home, holy crap. We get a lot of calls about stuff now.
A lot of those on that list, they started, some of them on the list started mowing today.
Okay.
It's just been a shitty week.
It, well, the weather hasn't cooperated. I mean, it's so wet that you got four days where people haven't been able to mow, and it's already. You know, but yeah.
I got one too, I could mine grasses half mowed. I started on a Thursday night, it rained, you know, I've got half done, so.
I moved mine Friday, and just mowed it again tonight, and it was overdue. I mean, that stuff shot up this last week.
I'll get it tomorrow afternoon.
We started mowing the day, and it's like, the guys are preparing to come on your counter, we're gonna have a two-day window.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make you a copy of this. Hey, Danny. So it sounds like everybody's gonna come, but maybe Dan Rodriguez, I guess. We just had a council meeting and we had, Doug was the only one that came, a couple of council members. Everybody else, you know, is up on the screen there. It's kinda weird, but.
Well, June, you should be able to have meetings together.
Yeah, that's kinda what we're gonna shoot for, you know, we're gonna look at the fire hall there, because. Temporarily, cuz that may allow us to spread out more. I mean, we'll see.
I watched the cap also, like you said, with two tables, they had one behind each other table. Some shit on the wall.
Huh?
I can go home.
Hey, Longz, you're here, Mark. Was wait, uh, Brian Eric, can he build a shed down there on that other lot? Brian says he can't build a shed there. Oh. Tell us your reaction.
What, his wife have called me, I wonder?
I don't know, April, we're there. He's got two lots.
Yeah.
He said something about he can't build a shed there.
Well, he's got two lots, they're both zoned residential, so technically, you're supposed to combine the lots together. That's what the city's done for a long time, so. That's been the, I think it might be an ordinance, yeah, so I told her that you have to combine the lots.
Oh.
You can't just put a building on another, you know, if it's zoned residential, you can't.
Oh.
Just put a garage or another building, cuz this goes back to that whole thing on here about the canopies.
Yeah.
Because I've had a couple people that wanna put canopies on these vacant lots. I don't think they wanna, I think they wanna store shit crap under them, I'm like. I mean, that's gonna look horrible.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's probably what I told her, I think it was April I talked to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I said you have to combine the lots if you're gonna do that.
Most of them.
Maybe when it gets time to do it.
I don't think he's in, I think he's just getting tired of it.
Hey, I'll let Malloy sit here, I'll go over there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Sure, he's in the center.
Yep, yep. I got it, it took me a few seconds to get that, what you're saying, so.
Does he actually talk to you about the city? The cross street.
Oh, it is down there to shed.
Yeah, well, that, that, the road to your place, the, the north side part, you know, it's pretty much just his driveway anyhow.
Yeah, they call the family way down to my shed.
Yeah.
Well, they had to be from his.
From, yeah, from the corner.
Well, you don't wanna do that, cuz then like you better that, then, I mean, what city sewer no other?
There's full city sewer along the way.
Oh, wow. Yeah, he's, yeah, he's died.
The sewer back there.
Grain sewer, there's gonna, grain water is coming down there.
My city, city, he asked me about this.
We get close together or not? We're supposed to stay six feet apart or something.
Is that?
It's all legally there. Hey, Jim?
Let Jimmy have the center.
He didn't call me back today, he gets the mallet.
You call me?
Call you more than one thing.
Would you call?
Phone is not.
No message?
I didn't even message, no. I figured he's just like directing.
Kettles, Kettles.
Not Danny, but Scott, you don't, you don't.
You're gonna miss calls though.
Yeah, I don't know, this thing has been crazy.
Oh, why did I got you here, Scott? Like the, uh, your guys' place, like your patios up there?
Yeah.
That part of the association?
Um, no, we pay for them.
So when you did your, did you re-ramp yours before?
No, you mean, uh, the carpet, no.
At least down on mine, it's all the rains.
They're raining in?
Yeah, up above.
Okay.
I don't really wanna ask Sally, but I, I don't think they put underrailing down, you know, like, they put like rubber eyes. They got that, like, flooring carpet up there.
You know, I think she did that sometime back for, um, when she put new railing in that up there.
Oh, really? Well, I had my ass limbed up, did he chalk light it up, or let's leave it to you?
A lot of pictures.
Well. I wonder how, there's no calls on here. There was one from Kettleson?
Oh, hey, can you have Kettleson check moms too?
No, he don't wanna do it, he's got a messed up knee. I talked to him, um, Tuesday.
Well, if you get somebody out and check moms too.
Okay, I'm gonna go with Route sixty. Okay, so I don't know what's.
So what Kettleson do to his knee?
I don't know, I think that's a good excuse, he don't wanna work.
Pretty much, I think.
Yes.
Be in Arizona.
Well, he wouldn't wanna be in Arizona now, would he?
No.
Isn't he still?
A lot of golf here, but.
Isn't he still shackled up with the?
Well, I'm sure.
Same on.
Yeah?
I'm sure.
Yeah, I called him and I just said they were gonna check. Put a garbage disposal in. And, um, check hasn't been cashed since April first. Terry, you know, Sue's daughter. Called me to find out how come the check wasn't cashed, so I called Jim Tuesday, and he says, oh, I think you cashed it. I said, well, if you didn't, better look it up, so.
Now, you know what my wife goes through?
You what?
You know what my wife goes through? I'm gonna cash this and cash.
Daddy?
Daddy's that way? Oh, this one?
Both ways, I think. We'll, we'll get him cashed.
I thought the checkbook is always off, ten dollars.
Then you know, since you take that out of there, though, I don't need that.